Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hicksville Exempt Village Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methvin?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here.
And let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a little slim on public visitors this evening, so we'll jump right into the principals' reports. Who would like to go first?
Sure, I will. Turn this on here, first school one, and back there. All right, good evening. Good to see everyone again. Of course, you know how it is, this time of year, it's hard not to kind of double up on some of the items we're going to cover, so I'll try to do my best to hop around a little bit. Hopefully, we can all work through all these different items. Of course, you know, as we all know, Monday, August 29th, was the first day of school. It was a great week. A big shout out to our entire staff, classified and certified, but especially our house leaders. They conducted two great assemblies. We had our welcome back assembly on Monday, where all the students go down there. We just kind of get their year start off right. And then, of course, on Friday, we recognize all of the new staff, all the new students, and of course, introduce the third grade students into their houses. Again, it's a great way to start the year with a positive note. Our fall sports teams are halfway through their season for volleyball, you know, cross-country, and football. We respect everything they've done, and how hard they work, and looking forward to a positive second half of the season. I do want to wish good luck to our golf teams. Their season is actually one of the shorter seasons. They actually start GMCs tomorrow for girls and boys golf, and of course, sectional play starts two weeks from now, so good luck to them. Hicksville High's partnership with APT continues to evolve and provide opportunities for students, APT and of course, HHS. Last week, I was asked to go to the ESC and present alongside APT and Ben Nice Wander. We presented to all of the superintendents in Northwest Ohio area, plus, we had the workforce development teams from Henry, Fulton, Williams, and Defiance Counties. Again, different businesses and schools are reaching out, trying to replicate what we're doing with APT, and it was a good opportunity to kind of share from the infancy stages of the program to where we are now, and the challenges that we faced in assisting other programs like it to develop and of course, be successful. I want to hit a little bit on the Hicksville report card, and I'm not sure if the two of you are touching that or not tonight. I don't want to dive really far into it. I wish we had a monitor to share, but pretty much, if you would go to the Ohio Department of Education School Report Card website, you'll see a district report, and then of course, school reports. And overall, as a district, boy, did we have a lot of stars, didn't we? I mean, I think as a school district and as teachers, administration here, we're pretty excited to see how well we did. We're not sure really comparing to other districts yet, but just for ourselves and how competitive we are here, I know we did a great job. On the high school side, I want to say that, you know, we actually met every indicator for the first time ever. Every indicator was met, which was exciting, and we were five stars across the board between achievement, progress, and of course, gap closing. So again, excited for our individual grade bands, but also as an entire district, how well we did. If there's no questions about that information, I can move on to future events. You guys okay with that?
I was just surprised yet again. Of course, I shouldn't have been, but they changed it. We no longer have grades, we have stars. So at first, I was like, well, where's the grade?
Well, the funny part about that, you know why they did that?
Why?
Because a lot of your, I want to say, your higher performing districts, your Solons and Ottawa Hills and, you know, places like, you know, great stature, I guess, throughout the state, they didn't understand how they could be in such a great school district and receive a C, because C to them is not average, you know? So I think there were a lot of people that were on this end of the spectrum who were upset they were getting Cs, but then there was also a lot of districts on the opposite end of the spectrum who were struggling and being called F schools. It just sounded extremely negative, so I guess one or two or three stars is better than Cs and Fs.
Gotcha.
That's the rationale I got from the article I read.
Okay. I was looking down, I'm like, well, where's the grade?
Sounds like ratings.
Yeah, but we're five stars, at least in the high school side and as a district. I know we have a few places we still need to continue to improve, and we are always working to improve no matter what, but again, we were excited about our rating. Future events, of course, festivities for the Hicksville High Homecoming are being planned for Friday, September 30th. I want to say congratulations to everyone who made the homecoming court, especially Queen Katie Chapman and King JR Mendoza. The Aces will be taking on the Paulding Panthers at 7:00 PM on Friday, September 30th. Prior to the game, we will have our homecoming parade. Again, that always begins at the fairgrounds. Technically, when I say the homecoming parade starts at 5:00, it doesn't really start, but getting everyone organized, usually we have close to 25 to 30 floats representing the school and the community, so you know, it's a pretty big event. We ask that all participants are there at 5:00. We try to get started, I believe, at 5:45. We will make our way up north Maple Street, then we'll head west on High Street, and then of course, we'll head north on Bryant Street into the park, where the floats will of course go around the track, well, the old track of the football field there, Aces Field. The dance, of course, takes place on Saturday, October 1st here at the school. And then one other item, Picture Day was canceled last week because of fog. Students and parents should be getting information this week for a retake day, and I believe that's going to be on Friday, October 7th. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, middle school report. I can say the first three weeks of school have gone quite well for us in the middle school. Students have gotten into their daily routines, and it appears that has been a smooth transition for the fifth grade this year, so I was excited to see that. I'm hoping that our fifth grade orientation that we hosted this year did have an impact and that we can continue to do that. Junior High Musical is underway. The cast has been chosen, and they published that this week, and they're starting practices. This year's musical will be Fiddler on the Roof Junior, and it is being directed by Elaine Gurkin, and then assisted by Jennifer Bergman, Early Harris, and Catherine Bland. Our students will perform this musical November 18th through the 20th at the Huber Opera House. And our seventh and eighth grade teachers are planning a trip to a corn maze in October for the students who earn the quarter one incentive. That incentive, they have certain stipulations for, but essentially earning good grades, good behavior, but you know, great thing that they do each quarter, and this quarter will be to a corn maze. More information will be forthcoming on those details. And that's all I have for the middle school.
Well, the elementary has also gotten off to a great start. And then on Friday, this last Friday, on September 16th, the Ohio Department of Education announced that Hicksville Elementary as one of the 13 schools to have earned the 2022 National Blue Ribbon Award. Blue Ribbon schools are recognized based on their overall academic performances or progress in closing the achievement gaps among the student subgroups. It's considered one of the highest honors for American schools to achieve. So last February, I was informed that Hicksville Elementary was nominated, and was asked to complete the application process. That included providing our demographic data, such as student population, free and reduced numbers, as well as students receiving services. I wrote a variety of narratives of our school overview, approaches to our curriculum, instruction, and assessment in all areas, which included like the students performing above grade level, below grade level, our English language learners, as well as what our arts curriculum looked like. And lastly, I was asked to describe our school climate and culture, including our school leadership. So I am confident that this award was only possible because of the constant support from our administration and our Board of Education, our dedicated and passionate staff, as well as our hardworking students. I'm very grateful to work for a board that continues to support our students, staff, and most importantly, the vision of our superintendent. So thank you.
So one of 13 Ohio?
Yes.
Yeah, and only, what, 200 nationally? That is amazing, and you should be very, very proud of that. Thank you. That's awesome work.
Thank you.
Okay, anything from four county?
Do you have anything, Jeff?
All right. Keith's out, so keep on moving. All right, Anita, motion for minutes and financials.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Minutes from the regular board meeting on August 15th, 2022. Treasurer's Consent Agenda Items: Cash Reconciliation as of August 31, 2022; Financial Statements for August 2022; Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2023 as presented; Total General Fund Resources of $15,785,803.60; and total resources for all funds of $20,832,299.74. Approve fiscal year 2023 permanent appropriations as presented; Total General Fund Appropriations of $12,199,729.10; and total appropriations for all funds of $15,175,279.85. Approve the following then and now certificate to Jostens for $4,244.60 for 2022 yearbooks. Accept the following donations: $100 from Defiance County Agricultural Society for Middle School High School Art Club; $1,200 from Tribune Printing for Athletic Department; $1,760 from various donations in memory of Ken Saylor. Roll call, please. Okay, Mr. President.
Unless you have any color to add.
Commentator, not a whole lot, really. I don't, I think everything's moving pretty smoothly at the beginning of the school year also, and so I don't know if I mentioned last month or not, our second quarter of calendar 2022, school district income tax came in, and it goes about 6.8% above last year. So that's a good trend, and hopefully that continues. So that money comes in like right at the end of July, next time will come in right at the end of October, so. Foundation monies are coming in, the tax monies for August have come in, so slightly above last year's, not a lot, but just a little bit, so that's really all I have.
Good, thank you.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. And motion for employment and certified staff, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Jen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Dave Blue, Assistant Boys Basketball Coach; Sandy Brown, HQSD Committee Member; Sandy Brown Land Lab Coordinator; Sandy Brown District Mentor Coordinator; Kristin Kaufman, Co-High School Student Council Advisor; Jennifer Cunningham, Co-High School Student Council Advisor; A.J. Clausing, Head Junior High Boys Basketball Coach; Ryan Meiser, HQSD Committee Member; Ryan Meiser, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach; Jared Rosebrock, HQSD Committee Member; Christine Steeman, Head Junior High Girls Basketball Coach; Heather Taylor, HQSD Committee Member; Tony Tier, Mini Aces Basketball Coach; Kelly Van Horn, HQSD Committee Member; Amber Zachrich, HQSD Committee Member.
I do have one question on that. What does HQSD stand for?
So back in the day, there used to be SLO, Student Learning Objectives. It was tied to like OTES, which is like the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. That was OTES 1.0, that one away, so OTES 2.0, which is the Teacher Evaluation System they brought upon them, is more focused on teacher growth, which should directly impact student growth, rather than focus on student growth, and then relating that to teacher growth, so they kind of flipped the switch there. So the HQSD piece, the Highly Qualified Student Data, those are the assessments that they use that are approved by the committee of state that they are, you know, the right depth of knowledge, I guess we would say, they say fair tests, your testing with the information being taught. The state, actually, if you're a value-added teacher, for example, even course tests like Algebra I, Geometry, Government Test, and then of course, through the middle school and elementary school, you are required to use that as one of your HQSD data points. And then there's benchmark tests that the state can use, because they say their tests are the best, so you don't do anything. But if you're a teacher and you are in a non-tested area, you have to get approval that your tests are qualified, I guess, and it's just a, it's a sample of what you do, but still, that's kind of in a nutshell what it is.
It's a big nutshell.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, every year you're made, so.
That's a good explanation, though, and a fair question, Eric. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Need another motion for employment and classified staff, please. Thanks, Steph.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend to accept the resignation from Shelley Comiso as a paraprofessional effective August 26, 2022. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Shelby Ori as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Bridget Hoblit as cafeteria worker with zero years' experience at five hours per day for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Don Van Horn as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2022-2023 school year, contingent on obtaining appropriate licensure. Recommend to approve Randy Guilford as a classified substitute for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Ian DeWitt, Assistant High School Wrestling Coach; John Deal, Freshman Boys Basketball Coach; John Hagerty, Mini Aces Basketball Coach; Jeff Sleisman, Assistant Junior High Boys Basketball Coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2022-2023 school year. Kelsey Monroe, Girls Basketball; Jay Souls, Wrestling; Bailey Tier, Boys Basketball; Bob Weatherhead, Girls Basketball; Clark Zartman, Girls Basketball. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Need a motion for services and agreements, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve a payment in lieu of transportation agreement between Hicksville Exempt Village Schools and Shannon Stotler for the 2022-2023 school year. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. And a motion for other business.
I'll move.
Thanks, Steph.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve a resolution allowing the Board of Education to temporarily authorize the employment of substitute teachers who do not hold post-secondary degrees for the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 school year.
So we know this is like a state thing and COVID and emergency and all that. How often do we actually use people who don't have the degree, just in general for the school, or do you really know?
Well, historically, they had to have a degree.
Right, and it wasn't until COVID.
I think it happens more using like the paraprofessionals for a classroom if needed. Typically, I don't think we have a lot of people that have acquired that position without some type of degree.
Would you feel the same on the high school side, Jeff?
Yeah, honestly, I mean, all the subs that we've been using throughout COVID and today are typically subs that are, you know, they have a degree or they're retired teachers.
And I, I mean, I understand reading this and kind of where it came from, from a state level, that there are areas that might need it. I was just curious with us specifically, how much we did it, and if this is more of the backup, backup plan, kind of.
I think that it's something that during COVID, personally, would have been nice to have, and we never really had that, and then even now, I mean, we're all, because we've got, I mean, it's, we've got a lot of long-term subs in the building right now, which is making it difficult for us to get coverage right now, because our best subs are our long-term people.
I can say I have the sub list right here, because I've reached out to about eight people just to try to find an aid position tomorrow that I can't fill, so I would definitely consider, because the need is there, I just don't think we do, we don't, we really don't have a huge pool of people to pick from.
Thanks for putting out the spot.
No, you're fine.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Old business.
So we talked about it briefly. We've talked about it in the past, you know, that we as a board, we would like to get some kind of long-term, like, we're talking 10-year plan of what it is that we see coming down the line, building product, it's massive, you know? But in that, Mr. Slattery, we've had discussions with you before, we're going to need input, especially from, I think, the sports, the athletic directors on, you know, we talked about the football field, and there are areas that we're not in compliance, and we're kind of on the edge, you know, that we're okay until we get evaluated again down there, kind of thing. And so, you know, it's, is it, do we put Band-Aids on it because we're looking forward, you know, we're going to be replacing things? And where are we replacing them, and what are we going to be putting in? And to have some kind of idea in mind long-term, it's not that any of us can say what we're going to do 10 years from now, but we can at least make financial decisions that are well-based in the long-term plan.
I think it'd be advantageous to do what we did last time with the Fieldhouse Project, is I think it was my second year here, we kind of had a working meeting, and we kind of talked about, well, you know, part of it was a wish list, part of it was what do we need?
Right.
And within that meeting, there was a discussion of the financial obligation that we hold in that, and at that point, we had a very healthy cash-on-hand account. We moved like $300,000 into a capital expense fund, and you know, all the whole, it took about six years to get the ball going, but that plan started, and six years later, it's done.
Right, exactly.
And this, this idea of the facilities that we have for our sports that perform outdoors is something we need to continue to discuss and definitely start to plan, especially with location.
Right.
Well, go ahead, sorry.
And I was just thinking, combining, you know, some places combine different sports, whether it's the track around the football field, I mean, we're not talking about just exclusively football, but all of our outdoor sports that we have to make, you know, plans for, and even indoor, whether it's Eric and his fan project, you know, it's stuff like that that do take up a good chunk of money for us, that I would like to get that 10-year plan out there, so that way, you know, or Mr. Schaefer, I mean, we've done that in the past, where we've had some big financial ask from different departments of the school, and so if we can get all of those players together with their wish list, with their thoughts, like, this is what we think will be best, I mean, obviously, we're not writing the check anytime soon, so I think it would be.
Well, we can at least put it into a one, like a one, five, and 10-year plan, so you've got like short-term, tactical, medium-term, and then long-term, strategic-type ideas about what's coming down the podcast, so I agree.
And I know, I mean, what also impacts that is, when we talk about this poor, it's like, when you start talking about the track and football field, the challenges we have there, we are going to have a pretty hefty expense in the next eight years on keeping those, those facilities up to code and the improvements that are required of them. So what's interesting about that is, you know, that's two separate facilities, like you said, and combining them, but then on top of that, you know, that discussion of, well, are we keeping the facilities we have, are we going to combine them, where's it going to go, is it going to stay at the park, is it going to potentially, we have an opportunity to be out here, you know? A lot of those conversations are going to have to happen in the next year or two. In fact, I also had the Girl Softball Association is working with, I'm not sure what the name of the group is.
I was thinking too, just the boosters, you know, like, we don't want them making improvements down in the football field if we don't plan on being there long-term, so like, it matters to a lot of.
And then the Girl Softball Association is doing that, they are getting ready to invest some money along with a, it's almost like an architectural group down there to maximize, you know, the money they're spending, to get the most out of that, and they contacted me and said, hey, listen, Jeff, you maybe want to talk to us about some of this, some ideas, because it could impede on some of the areas where we may need space to be like where our practice fields at, because we don't own every square inch of that practice field.
Right, right.
That little Peewee Girls Diamond is owned by Defiance.
The varsity diamond area is owned by the Defiance Parks and Rec, the parking lot there, and the Girls Diamond there is the Defiance Park and Rec, and then Hicksville, yeah, it's Hicksville Schools, the Hicksville Village, and the Peewee one, I don't know if that's.
So back to.
Also, because the Girls Diamond is, I don't know that the Peewee one is, because we have, we have the map down at the park.
Yeah, and we've, we've received the map before, I think I might even, I might have scanned it in, but so, in thinking that, would it be best to have those groups scheduled, like, have the boosters come in and talk to us at, you know, 6:15, and the girls athletic to come in and talk to us at 6:30, or, you know, is that the best way to approach it? So that way, they're not maybe necessarily?
Maybe a work session we invite them to and gather their thoughts, and maybe we can compile them and present one statement instead of bringing in first person, because I'm going to need to say, you know, how to build it, we all kind of digress and get off.
We do, yeah, that's why I was wondering if, you know, if different groups came in and talked to us at, at a specific time and presented their thoughts.
Yeah, I can work with Keith to get something put together on the administrative side.
We need to do that probably sooner than later.
Between now and the next meeting, or between like, say, now and Christmas? What do you think?
I think, based on why Eric Bassett and those guys and John Davis, Eric Bassett is, I think, the district representative for our girls facilities down there, and John Adams as the Girl Softball Association representative, they emailed me and included me, because they focused me on more of the booster side of things, because as you guys know, I'm leaving, so it's like, they were trying to get me involved, to have a voice, to come to you guys in the next administration, and Keith, and share what we would like to see, I guess. So I guess it's kind of, it kind of started, I guess, in a little bit, so.
Right, can we say we'd like to at least have it scheduled by the next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
And then?
I think that's a good, good goal.
Then, you know, after that, I mean, obviously, the meetings will happen.
Well, the only reason I asked, I know it's going to require some homework on, on their part to prepare for it, so.
Right, so if we can get a meeting set, you know, X amount of days away, and at least have a meeting set.
I'll take that as an action item.
I have another one. I have another one.
Shoot.
So, under, I wrote myself a note, so I would remember, so I've had several people come to me and talk to me about the Tribune closing, and that the Tribune is wild, wild, widely read by some of our elder community members, and that's how they get their information about what's going on at the school, what's going on in sports, they actually read our board minutes that are in the paper, and I feel like we need, we as a school, we, the Tribune has done an amazing job of being our voice for the community, and what, and how are we going to make up for that? So that way, our information gets out to our community members as adequately, and.
If I could add on to that idea, actually, me, though, we're just talking about that idea of adding more community and school events to our legally live-stream update we do every Wednesday, whether that be talking about like, you know, things that are going on at the school, talking about more community events, and overall, just picking up some of the things that Tribune is leading, so the community can be more involved, and that there would be a little bit of news still involved with the community.
I like that, and I also thought, with the high school side, do we have classes that they could incorporate some of that in some way, whether it's journalism, or yearbook, or, like, is there a way that, that our students in the classes that we already have do a better job at, like, that being their end result is?
You mean di- digital, or like printed publications?
I was thinking more digitally.
Okay.
Without us, you know, I don't, I don't want to take on the expense of sending out, like.
Right.
You know, but if, you know, the students have to write a report, can we say, hey, write a report on the volleyball team, you know what I mean? I, I don't know how that would work out, but, you know.
We, we currently have a full deck, which comes out once a quarter, and Mrs. Lee's class, or Beth Feltz's class does that, that's probably not as often as what we want it to be, I'm assuming there's going to be some opportunity there to find a way to provide them, I mean, and the full deck is actually our part of print, it's just not distributed, it's just provided throughout the school.
Right, so, you know, could we use those avenues and make them available online, or make them, you know, so that we, in some aspect, I get, like, there's a fun aspect for the kids and what they do, you know, but can some of that be more polished or professional, that we could?
And our video productions class is kind of saying both that.
Towards the community?
And we could, we could, hopefully, right opportunity for the middle school video productions and the high school video productions, to do a better job of maybe almost, you know, sports and event broadcasting, you know, when I say event, that includes all our, all our, all our, you know, fine arts programs and things like that, too, so, it's just having that structure, and getting everyone in the right direction.
Right.
The expectations have to be there.
And two, I think, just making it easier to share, I know I've, I've watched the kids' production, you know, on YouTube and stuff, but sometimes trying to get there is not always the easiest, so, you know, how can we, hey, it's Friday, our new publication's out, you know, type of thing, just something to think about, I'm not saying any of this needs to happen this week, but I think we have a great opportunity to use our kids to get out to the community, what a great school we are.
And I'm going to throw this out there, and it's just, thinking out loud, okay, I know that as I'm somewhat transitioning to Fort County the last few years, and some other districts that I've worked with, you know, these districts now, I mean, we're the best advocates for our school, we talk about it all the time, you guys as board members, you know, us as administrators, the teachers, you know, the kids, we are our own advocates, and you're starting to see more districts have a PR person, now, it's not a full-time position, but it is a someone, some sort, who runs their social media sites, who everyone goes to, and they get that stuff distributed, I'll be honest with you, I'm helping out with the student council, too, it's a, it's a white committee right now, and the one thing I did do Friday, I didn't think about it, was I had Kelly VanHorn take a bunch of pictures, she emailed them to me Friday, I haven't posted any pictures about homecoming tour, you know, and it was the last thing on my mind to do.
I think a supplemental for that type of thing would be very appropriate, in my personal opinion, that makes sense, I mean, especially with the Tribune not being able to fill that need for us anymore, and I totally understand that, and they've done an amazing job for a long, long time.
Well, if you're using programs students are already participating in, getting credit for, that's cheap marketing, really is.
And I like the idea of one centralized person, because you're right, I mean, we need the message out from all three, you know, from the middle school, from the high school, from the elementary school, and so to have one person kind of coordinate that and make sure all that stuff's getting out there makes sense.
Yeah, and as a principal, and sometimes as a coach, the last place you want to be is on social media.
Well, and.
It's not what you're posting, it's what you read about.
You, you definitely, that's a choosy, we want to make sure we have the right person in charge of that.
And we have, we actually have the Thrill Share app, which we provided training to our staff a couple of years ago, we probably need to do it again, because of the custom new staff members, and that Thrill Share app is any coach, anyone in this building, you know, the musical directors, I mean, the student council, pictures, all that stuff, they can, they can create a post within that and submit it, and it just has to be approved by the principals, and the principals have approved it automatically posted to all of our social media, and, so we've actually kind of started that on the way, too, but again, there's so many hands in the pot, that makes it hard sometimes.
Yeah. Okay.
That's a great suggestion, though, it really is.
Good ideas.
Any other old business?
I'm done now.
No, that's okay, that's why we're here, that's good. Any other discussion? All right. No unannounced guests, and no need for executive session, of which I'm aware, you guys.
Nope, not aware of any.
Okay. So in that case.
Looks like October seventeenth.
October seventeenth at five thirty. And I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen, thanks, Steph. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. In record time.